Good evening. The Board of Education reconvenes to have the firm of Hazard, Young, Atia and Associates present to us tonight with regard to the superintendent of schools' desired characteristics and profile. And Mr. Leece, thank you very much for conducting this work for us, and we would ask that you would go through the processes as you deem necessary for-
Sure.
...for the board and the community to know how extensive your process has been up to this point.
Great. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be back with you. I congratulate Ms. Epps and Ms. Fellows. Welcome to the- welcome to the board. I left you so that you are not deprived. All the other board members that are playing session got a notebook, so I left your notebooks right on your place with your name on it. So now that you- you have- I know you would- your life wouldn't be the same without that notebook, so (laugh) another notebook in any event. I wanted to highlight a couple of things. I mean, the main purpose tonight, as you indicated, is to go over the leadership profile. I think you know that our firm believes very strongly in extensive community input early in the process to develop the characteristics that you most desire in your superintendent. Your entire team is here that's working on this search is here tonight. I know we met, and I think you met Brad Drager over here, who's superintendent in Livingston, New Jersey, is sitting superintendent, but you only heard her voice before, so I want to introduce Diana McCauley, who's the other part of our team as well. I'm going to go over some general things and sort of the outline of the leadership profile. Diana's going to talk about the survey results, and then Brad is going to focus on our recommendation to you around the characteristics that we want to advertise that you are looking for in your next superintendent. Those characteristics really become the basis in our mind for the questions that we ask when we screen candidates, and we suggest they become the basis for the questions that you ask, so that those characteristics that you're looking for come directly out of the community input that we had. Before we move to the leadership profile, et cetera, I wanted to make sure again because we were sort of- we're ready now to sort of kick this whole thing into high gear. We have the board seated that's going to be working on this and interviewing and hiring the superintendent. I ask, and I made this a little earlier, to hopefully better explain rather than just verbiage. This is the original chart that we gave you way back in our planning session, the four phases of the superintendent's search, the planning phase, which we're ending just now. Then we'll kick into the recruitment advertising phase, then you'll have the major role in the selection phase, obviously, and then the appointment phase, getting a signed contract, doing the deep background checks on the recommended candidate and those kinds of things. What I wanted to make sure that you were all aware of, and we talked about in September, but that was several months ago, what I wanted to make sure you were all aware of, one of the most difficult things that we need to do now is to schedule your time, and I'm just going to start with the bad news. We're going to schedule a lot of your time in order to make this process go well. So in the superintendent flowchart that I passed out before, we'll be working with the staff, with Bryant and Lori and Ms. Jacobs and whomever, but I wanted you to be aware that right now we're focusing on February 13th, 14th or 15th, sometime in the middle of February. We're going to need a two-hour session with you all. We're going to decide on the questions that you're going to ask in the first round of interviews. We'll help facilitate that discussion. We're going to give- present the people that we've interviewed, the people that have applied for the jobs and the ones that we're recommending that you interview, the people we see as the top candidates for your superintendent position. And so that whole planning session is really when you first begin to see who your applicants are and whatever, it's an exciting session. That takes about two hours, and we're aiming that for the middle of February. I didn't presume to sit down with the different calendars you have and try to schedule something right now, but we need to work on this now so that you can work this into your regular schedules. Once we do that in the middle of February, about two weeks later, and I've labeled February 27th to March 3rd, sometime in that timeframe, most boards use a weekend, but you can do it any way you want. A few boards have done it, you know, on successive afternoons and evenings, but the second part where you're actually interviewing four, five, six candidates, whoever you deem are your top candidates, that will take about 10 hours cumulatively, okay? So that's why a Friday night and an all-day Saturday often works well for boards, but we need to think about that and we need to figure that, plan that in. That's the biggest chunk of time. Once you have done those interviews, then we come and facilitate a discussion with you about which of three people, generally three people, you want to see again, that you want to bring back to Prince George's County Public Schools for more intensive interviews, for additional vetting, if you will. And so scheduling that time, that's about- it can- sometimes boards do it three to four afternoons so that they can bring a different candidate in each day. Sometimes board members put it on the weekends. We can, you know, you can decide, or if you have any input tonight, you can share it with the staff. But basically, we've got the two hours, we've got two weeks later, the 10 hours, about a week or 10 days later, we have the three afternoons. That's usually about seven, about six or seven hours kind of thing. And that is, I know, a huge amount of time, but I just wanted to get that mindset in your head about what's necessary in terms of going through the interview process at this point. And then it gets a little easier from that point on. But I wanted you to have that, and what I would like to do is work- start working next week to figure out how this fits into the rest of your schedule so you can all put it on your calendars. And you can stop me at any point in time, but I wanted to highlight that. Particularly because there were two new board members, I updated the summary of our September 7th letter to you, sort of summarizing what we did in our planning session. I wanted to make sure that in particular the two board members knew- the two new board members knew exactly what happened. In doing that, I owe a huge debt of thanks to Lori and Bryant Coleman in particular, who, I mean, we basically had to reschedule everything because of Hurricane Sandy, so it was not an easy putting the schedule together, and they were just wonderful about it. So that's the background, and now I'm ready to move to the report. Have I confused you yet? Do you want me to pause? I don't pause easily, so I have to remind myself to pause. Okay. In terms of the leadership profile report, I'm not going to read it to you, but the good news from my perspective is we got an incredible survey response. Normally, when we come and meet with various groups, and we- and you see in the report which groups we met with and the community forums and those kinds of things, they are not usually packed houses, the community forums, that's typical. But what is extraordinary is we had almost 1,700 people responded to the online survey. So I really feel good that we really got a strong base of support, and I really liked the distribution as well. We didn't have many teachers that came to the in-person events, but 800 completed the survey, which was wonderful, and 300 parents, so we really got a nice balance in terms of the various groups. And we were ultimately able to interview all board members, previous board members and new board members included. Basically, all those interviews come together, and you'll find them in- towards the back of the report where we list all the major comments that were made by group, and we put a little hash mark if different groups said the same thing. They are also listed in alphabetical order, so there's no attempt at putting them in priority order. But basically, on page 10, I would have you note are the consistently reported themes, the things that keep coming- that keep- that kept, excuse me, that kept coming up over and over again in terms of what the strengths of the district were, what the challenges of the district and what characteristics were important. Those were reinforced by the survey that Diana will highlight, and I also wanted to note that it was my job to read all of the comments for the survey. I included it for board members. There were 57 pages, single-spaced, of comments to board members, and the only comment that I would make is, "I have never seen the word stepping stone used so many times." I mean, there was wasn't a ques- I mean, the notion that there's a lot of feeling out there, not surprising to you, lots of feeling out there that they don't want a superintendent who will use this as a stepping stone to something else. So that comment, I mean, just sort of unsolicited, I mean, that phrase just kept happening over and over and over again. I couldn't believe the number of times I read it. But you have all of those comments. If you- if you really need- have having trouble go to sleep some night, you've got 57 pages to look at. Very respectful, very interesting, and from a wide range of groups. Okay. Let's focus next on the strengths of the district very consistently, the progress that you've made, the things that- how far you've come. I can honestly say that a new superintendent will have the opportunity to build on a great foundation that has been put in place here. Some of the gains in terms of student achievement were the ones that were most frequently highlighted. There are some areas of improvement, graduation rates and those kinds of things, and they certainly came up from time to time, but it's really important to recognize the strengths. We use this to both sell applicants and when we're recruiting applicants, and we encourage our applicants to read this profile so that they have a better knowledge if this is a good fit for them in particular. The quality and commitment of the staff members was probably the next biggest thing, theme, and then the diversity of Prince George's County as this- of Prince George's County Public Schools as this enormous asset to the school system. And I think as we got into it, more and more people talked about, you know, the diversity runs so many ways. It's an international diversity, it's a racial diversity, it's a socioeconomic diversity, it's an urban-suburban world diversity, so it's a geographic diversity. Lots, incredible diversity in Prince George's County Public Schools, and that's a huge strength. In terms of challenges, well, huge numbers of people mentioned finances. I'm sure you'll be shocked to hear that. And then the flip side of the diversity is this, it's this wonderful asset, but trying to be equitable. And what is equitable in a district like this with many, many students with a lot of special needs, many students coming from homes that don't have advantages that other students have coming from other homes? How's the best way of dealing with this? And looking for a superintendent who has some experience and some ideas and a vision around how to make this work seems critically important. And then, and it was interesting to sit here tonight and hear you talk about facilities. There was also recognition that that equity issue extended into facilities, and that came up frequently as well. In terms of desired characteristics, the- you have the four things that came from the survey, which Diana will highlight. You have things that are generally fairly typical. Want a superintendent to be visionary, collaborative, honest, have integrity, those kinds of things. There was an interesting discussion, both in the community forums and a little bit in the survey comments, about political skills and the political skills required of a new superintendent in this environment, in this culture. And I really came, I- there were more than one group that I said, "Tell me what you mean about political skills. What does that mean to you, et cetera?" And I think my conclusion from all of that was that there are a lot of people at various levels of government, apart from the school board, who's, of course, your primary responsibility, but lots of people are interested in improving the quality of public education in Prince George's County Public Schools. A new superintendent needs to be able to harness that enthusiasm but still stay married to the vision that he or she implants with you all. In other words, they work for you first and foremost, but there's a lot of people with a lot of interest in that, and sort of being able to marshal those resources and marshal those support will require some political skills. And ultimately, that's what I concluded, is what people were telling us. And then this whole notion of there's no guarantee that no matter what anyone says, you never know what's going to happen in their personal life or their professional life, so there's no guarantee that the next superintendent will be here five years or six years or four years or whatever, but certainly a desire that we really screen carefully for that and really focus on people who have a long-term commitment to making the school system great. That is sort of my quick overview summary of the key characteristics. I'm going to turn over to Diana McCauley to talk a little bit more about the survey data, unless you have any comments or questions. Do you want to wait till the end? I'm sorry.
I'm asking colleagues to compile their questions, and we'll ask them all-
Okay, we'll ask them all at the end. Okay, Diana, we'll talk about the survey.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to, first of all, be here and meet with you. I've had the opportunity to talk with a couple of you via the phone, and so I greatly appreciate the time in front of you this evening. Similar to Alan, what I'd like to do is just emphasize the outcomes or the results, the feedback, however you want to call it, that we generated from the online survey. Again, as you well know, we at HYA value what happens at the front end of the survey. And as Alan already mentioned, you had almost 1,700 constituents or stakeholders respond to the online survey, and they came from the six groups, I believe, that you identified, which were the administrators, the teachers, support staff, students, parents and community members. The essence of what I am reporting on is contained in the document on pages six through 10, or through nine. I will not read all of the information. I will not insult you that way, but I will just highlight a few things. First of all, also as Alan has already indicated, the response rate was tremendous, and of all the responders, almost half of them were teachers. And so another significant group that responded were the parents, and that was about 20 percent, a little over 20 percent of the responders. And what the survey did in terms of the online survey, it kind of collected input and also tried to sort it according to different categories. Those categories are community engagement, communication and collaboration, vision and values, instructional leadership and management. And then of all of the responses that were received, the top four characteristics that were identified are listed there on page six. And very briefly, let me just say, they are not really dissimilar from some of the characteristics that evolved from the interviews and the focus groups. And so those four characteristics are that, first of all, the first one listed there responds to the area of community engagement. So they're hopeful that the next superintendent will listen to and effectively represent the interests and concerns of students, staff, parents and community members. The second area responds to communication and collaboration, and that characteristic is foster a positive professional climate of mutual trust and respect among faculty, staff and administrators. The third top-rated characteristic is in the area of management. So it is hopeful that this next individual will recruit, employ, evaluate and retain effective personnel through the district and its schools. And then fourth and finally, in the area of vision and values, your responders indicated that they want this person to have a clear vision of what is required to provide exemplary educational services and implement effective change. So the results that were gathered indicate that the various stakeholders were generally speaking in agreement, and on the other hand, there were several items that stakeholders valued much more than others. I will not go through all of them on pages six through seven, but I would say that some of these are disaggregated and then overlaid and combined so that you get a picture of what different stakeholder groups really are saying and what they really value. So just as two examples, the first one there indicates that teachers, support staff and parents were significantly more likely than administrators to select the community engagement item, which is the listen and so on and so forth. Another example is that the administrators were significantly more likely than teachers, support staff, parents and community members to select the communication and collaboration item, seek a high level of engagement with principals and other school site leaders. And so you can see that from the four major characteristics, none of them, not to say it wasn't important, but just based on the responses to the online survey, none of them indicated in one of the top four rated characteristics, the area of instructional leadership. I will just say, if you have any questions about that, I too would be more than glad to respond to your questions when we get to that portion in the presentation. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Brad, who will come and talk about the leadership characteristics.
Good evening. This is- I want to compliment the community and all the staff of Prince George's County Public Schools because Alan and I and Diane, we read through a lot of these comments on these surveys, and I was commenting to Alan earlier tonight, your community and your staff has a very positive and uplifting outlook on this search. Sometimes we get, for lack of a better word, cranky. It just comes across that way, but your- the people really were very responsive and very hopeful and optimistic that we could find the right person for you. So I'm going to direct your attention to page 20 because this is the marketing tool, it's a screening tool, it's what Alan, Diane and I will use to make sure that we are matching our candidates' qualifications to you. I recommend that if you see something here that is either missing or that you don't like, that we make some changes tonight because we will use this document a lot as we go through the interview process, especially at our first screening level. We've tried to capture what Diane and Alan have been talking about, and you see these are almost in a priority order in terms of what we feel are some of the most important things. For instance, right up at the top in that first bullet, we have willing to make a long-term commitment, and as Alan said, we're not sure it's going to be five, but we are shooting four, you know? This is not something that's, to use his other term, a stepping stone. I think we get at that political climate in the second bullet where we talk about the strong presence and involvement, recognizing the strengths representing student interests, but also working with the board and elected officials as necessary, recognizing how complex this environment is. Trust and transparency, and then the ethical thing to do the right thing always was, and we have that as the last bullet, fairness, ethics and honesty, but trust and transparency, they kind of go hand in hand. Financial savvy, we talked about because there's a difficult financial climate in many schools, but in Prince George's County Public Schools. And working collaboratively, again, we even reemphasized it in a bullet by itself. Strong communicator, motivator, collaborative, strong educational vision, making sure that your excellent staff stays that way through retention and recruitment and selection, dealing with all the diversity issues that are both a strength and a challenge, and have solid partnerships involving parents and business and community organizations. Below the next line, with regard to leadership experiences and accomplishments, obviously Maryland has one of the tougher state superintendent certification routes, so we have to make sure they meet Maryland's certification issues, demonstrated track record of success, looking for experience in a diverse system and possesses a doctorate. Any questions, admissions, changes that you see in this that you think we should be addressing that are not addressed?
Just one correction in bullet 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, where it says, "The community and elected city officials-"
Counting. Thank you. That's why your eyes are good at this. All right? And then my final part here, other than answering questions, is you had a chance, I think, to review this earlier at some point. This is the print and online ad, and I just want to go over the last paragraph to make sure we have it exactly the way you want it. Superintendent experience in a diverse school system is preferred, and you also took out a button, changed it to an ad, and I think that's a good change. And then the board is offering a four-year contract and a regionally competitive package of salary and benefits. Those were the edits that I had passed to me, and I want to make sure you're okay with the online and print ad because you'll be seeing that very soon on the internet and in some of our print publications. Okay. I'll turn it back to all three of us for your questions, but we'll let Alan come back up to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and we will get started on questions.
Sure.
Ms. Higgins?
Thank you very much. My first question has to do with the fact that instructional leader did not come up as the top four category, so characteristics. So I think we would all agree that's a very, very important characteristic. So that doesn't mean it gets lost in the shuffle, or does that get put into the desired characteristics? Can you talk about that a little?
Well, first of all, we can, when we write the questions, we can focus on that as a key characteristic. My guess is, and it's simply a guess, my guess is it didn't become one of the key characteristics because in a system as large as this, there is- there are delegated responsibilities. And I think the notion is that the superintendent isn't necessarily the main person doing curriculum instruction. He or she needs to know about it.
Right.
He or she needs to have the vision.
Okay.
But the sense that I have is that that's a strong department, that's a strong area, and it just wasn't something- sometimes you look for, sometimes in these searches, people say, "We really need someone with a financial background," and sometimes they say, "We really need someone with a curriculum instruction background." I just didn't hear anyone saying, "We really need someone with curriculum instruction to power," not because it wasn't important, it's just because we have strong people in that area.
Yes.
It's what I assumed.
Dr. Arby Gass and his staff probably would be in their mind. Okay. Can I ask on page 11 and 12, where you are taking the information from the focus groups, you have some of these with a number of checks behind them.
Yes.
What could you tell?
Well, what we attempted to do, and this is not scientific in any way, but if, we did meet individually with the board members, so for example, under, on page 11, under the board, data that shows student achievement indicators are improving. I don't know if there's 11 hash marks there, but I think I heard that almost from every single board member that we talked to when we pulled our notes, et cetera. So I simply wanted to indicate, because they're in alphabetical order and not in priority order, I wanted you to know that that came up a lot, and so that held some more weight when we were writing up our main stuff.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then I have the last on page 20 that you were-
Yes. Input on page 20, yes.
Yeah. On the second bullet, you really have two thoughts there, and that has to do with strong presence and involvement in the community-
Mm-hmm.
-and then working effectively with the school board primarily and elected officials as necessary. I would suggest separating those, that bullet. It's two thoughts.
I think that's a great idea. I don't know why I didn't think of that, so thank you.
Okay. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Ms. Fellows?
Yes, again, thank you, and it's a pleasure to see you up close. One of my questions is in reference to your participants that you used as a stakeholder. I guess my question around that is, were you able to capture any of the demographics of, you know, race, race, income, and that reflects the community at large?
You mean in the stakeholder groups?
In the stakeholder, yes.
I believe, I believe we were. I mean, obviously, we don't collect demographic information by people that show up, but I mean, there did seem to be some cross-section. It didn't seem to be all people that were saying the same things and looking alike and presenting themselves the same. So to the extent, I mean, I really have no way for certain, but I felt we got a fairly diverse group. We had, we had some people with particular interests in, we had some people with special ed interests, we had people with particular interests in the Gift and Talented Program. We had some people that expressed strong interest in making sure that we had Latino outreach and those kinds of things. So, I mean, we did hear in the themes, I think, some of the diversity that you would expect. How closely, it's just, I can't say.
Any other questions? Really? Okay.
All right. So next steps then is, we will publish this. I will send this to Bryant. This will go on the webpage and on your webpage and on our webpage. Again, we'll use it to screen candidates. We suggest you put it on your webpage as another part of your superintendent's search timeline, letting people know in particular that they're, hopefully, they will feel their voices were heard and their ideas and their input were, have been taken into account and documented as we proceed through this process. So I will make these edits, send a final copy to Bryant by first thing in the week, and we'll publish them on your, I recommend you, we publish them on your website. We will place the ads in the next part of Education Week. We'll get the online ads up before Christmas. We'll start interviewing. We expect to interview between 10 and 20 folks, the ones with the strongest resumes. There are, I forgot to look, I'm sorry, but there are, the application has been online and people are already responding, so I mean, there are candidates. And so we'll do our screening then, et cetera, and then we do need to, I want to iterate again, I apologize for the amount of time it's going to take for you, but it's so important in our mind that if we can get every single board member to be part of these interviews because, you know, the trite, or the cliche is, "This is the most important thing you'll ever do," but I honestly believe this is the most important thing you'll ever do. So to the extent that we can keep you all together as a board doing that and working on that, and that you all have the same input, and that we, and that we, our facilitation process will recognize that you might not all have the same viewpoints, et cetera, we'll do our best to make sure this is a process that you end with someone that you are just thrilled to have here and move this system forward. So thank you again for this opportunity, and we will work on the dates and the schedules, and we will get this material out. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Leece. I think that covers it all. I did promise one of my constituents that I would make sure that her comments around a superintendent who was green would be considered, so I wanted to publicly acknowledge that she very much cares about that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
And then, yes. Yes, Ms. Higgins?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, in looking at our desired characteristics, I would suggest to my colleagues that we add something about somebody with strong organizational skills-
Okay.
-or school organization. add something about somebody with strong organizational skills, or school organizational skills, because they're the leader of an eighteen thousand employee system.
If other board members are comfortable with that, we'll be happy to add it. I just want to make sure we're, we're working with all of you and working it through together.
My name's Higgins.
Strong organizational skills, okay. Great.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Chair recognizes Mr. Burrows. Actually, Mr. Burrows, if you would recognize Mr. Burrows. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, would like to move to reconsider my motion to adjourn from our earlier meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Beck. It's been properly moved and seconded that we reconsider our motion to adjourn. Unless you didn't put it in the minutes, I thought I did say that, Ms. Harrison, but I'll, I'll yield to you.
I would just note that I've conferred with Board Secretary. And in the minutes, what happened was Mr. Burrows moved to adjourn, Ms. Eubanks second. There was no vote taken, and your announcement was that the board was going to take a five-minute recess rather than to say that this meeting stands adjourned. That's according to the record. So therefore, it's not necessary for reconsideration. Mr. Burrows can simply withdraw his motion to adjourn at this time, and the board can take up what has now been announced by the superintendent to be the need to take emergency action. I believe that the budget consent agenda item is six point one, and under Board Policy ninety-three sixty, the policy indicates that where an item has been listed on the agenda, which it was, but it was not listed as an emergency, the board may, by at least two-thirds vote, decide to treat the item as, as an emergency. So you will need to have a motion from a board member to treat six point one as an emergency item and vote on that. And then, once that is approved, then you can move to addressing the need to take the emergency action on the item itself.
Madam Chair, I move to with, I just withdraw my motion.
You have thrown your motion. So noted. Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Colleagues, I entertain a motion, although I, although Ms. Harrison, I would think the superintendent needs to explain why he wanted to treat it as an emergency first. Dr. Crowley?
Thank you. It's been brought to our attention that item six point oh one, that's before the board for approval for FY two thousand thirteen restricted appropriate reassignments of over five hundred thousand within a major category for period October twenty-ninth through November thirtieth requires board approval, just given the timing of appropriation and, and reappropriation of funding, that it's necessary to take an action formally by the board.
Colleagues, I entertain a motion to treat this item as an emergency.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Thank you, Ms. Beck. It's been properly moved and seconded that we treat item six point one as an emergency. Ms. Thompson, call the roll, please.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Colleagues, I entertain a motion to...
Madam Chair, I would ask that we need a little bit more information on the public record regarding the need. The policy states that items declared as emergencies are described as those relating to an urgent public matter that is a threat to public health and safety or a reasonably unforeseeable situation requiring the board to take immediate action in order to maintain the effective business operations of the system or other matters determined to be an emergency as declared as such by the board.
Dr. Crowley?
I'd like to ask Mr. Sharon, Chief Financial Officer, to provide a rationale as to why we're requesting that the board take action tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley, board members. The item involves a ten oh three G SIG grant, a, specifically, there is a requirement that we encumber and obligate these resources, critical in terms of software licensing for instructional contracted services, for furniture and equipment and other, other equipment. And it's a rather, rather high magnitude of resources, and there's a, there's a time, time-sensitive requirement effective December thirty-one. This action needs to be completed.
Any questions?
Move to treat it as an emergency.
You already did that. Move to accept.
Move to accept.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Ms., Mr. Burrows and Ms. Boston. It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve item six point one, which has been approved to be treated as an emergency. Ms. Thompson, call the roll, please.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Ms. Boston?
Madam Chair, I move to confirm actions taken in executive session, personnel matters, collective bargaining, administrative matters.
Second.
It's been properly moved, the second that we confirm actions taken in executive session. Ms. Thompson, call the roll, please.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Thank you, Mr. Burrows. We've probably moved that we adjourn this meeting, and we are so adjourned.
Aye.
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 Happy holidays to everybody.